Counsel, I'd like to inform the public of the Open Meetings Act over on the northwest corner of the building. I'd like to now ask for a moment of silence and then the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now we'll have roll call.
Coy.
Here.
Langy.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Clausen.
Here.
Muren.
Here.
Moaning.
Here.
House.
Here.
Kyle.
Here.
I'd like to now have approval of the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
All right, now I'd like to have approval of the full agenda.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
All right. Our first action will be the public hearing at the request of James and Karen Ethererton for a zoning change from OD to R2 at 304 South Fifth Street. Public hearing is now open. Trent, would you like to speak to this?
Your honor, counsel, James and Karen Ethererton came in, oh, it's been a while back, and requested a zone change here. They're looking at purchasing this property and being an old office district area, they cannot get a loan. And this area here has been an office district before my time. So there is a few other houses in this area, and a lot of it to the south is R3. So we thought it was a good fit to go ahead and move that to R2. Number one, that it wouldn't hurt since there's other housing in area number two so they can refinance.
Does anybody have any questions, any comments? Anybody want to speak to this?
I guess you said there were some R3 to the south of it?
Yes.
The R2 just establishes kind of a transition area between commercial and...
Well, the R3 to the south, we have plenty of R3. And our zoning map, in fact, a lot of the older part of the town there is R3 zoned, which some of the lots in that area really don't for R3 is not, it's more conforming to an R2 actually than R3.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone from the audience wish to speak? Any counsel? I'd like the Planning Commission to report then.
The Planning Commission held a public hearing on February 20th, 2013, at the request of James and Karen Ethererton for a zoning change from OD Office District to R2 One and Two Family Residential at 304 South Fifth Street. The Ethererton's single-family dwelling is zoned for an office district which doesn't encourage financial support. They are advised to seek a zone change to bring the zone district of the property into compliance with its use. The Norfolk Planning Commission recommends approval of the zone change on a seven to zero vote.
I'd then like to close this public hearing, and I'd like an introduction of ordinance 5244 approving the zone change request of James and Karen Ethererton for zoning change of OD to R2 at 304 South Fifth.
I would introduce ordinance number 5244.
Second.
Short title is an ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Now we'll have roll call.
Ordinance number 5244 carries on first reading.
Your honor, as this appears to be more of a housekeeping situation, affects these people somewhat financially, I would move that we suspend the rules and pass this ordinance on second and third reading.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5244 carries on second and third.
All right, now I'd like to open the public hearing at the request of Mata Ambaji Incorporated for a zoning change from C3 to R1 at 721 East Norfolk Avenue. I'd like to open this public hearing. Trent, are you going to speak again?
I can't, I think we have somebody...
Okay. Would you please sign in and then state your name and address, please?
Sure. My name is Al Regia, and I am a resident of Norfolk.
Sir, I don't think it's turned on, could you...
Punch it out.
I think it was on.
It was on.
It was on.
All right.
Should we start over? I've had a long day. My name is Al Regia, and a resident of Norfolk and more particular neighbor to this property. I have owned the property adjacent to this proposed zoning change for six years and have had nothing but problems with the folks that supposedly rent or supposed to be operated as a motel. It's being operated more as a long-term facility. There's people that have lived in that hotel for duration of three, four years at a time. On a weekly basis, we are hauling their garbage out because they choose to dump the garbage behind my property. I have, some of you guys might know, but the property that's proposed next to it that I own is up for sale. We have had three different companies look at the property, and one of the deterrents is this hotel, proposed hotel. I feel that the operation is not run as what it was supposed to run, what it was designated for. I feel that the business is run into the ground, and this is an opportunity for the council and for the city to hold steadfast, not give them the zoning change so that it will allow them to patch up the area that was burnt from the fire. Since they would not be in compliance, it would more likely cause them to have to abandon the property, or at least that portion of it. So I ask the city's support in getting Norfolk back to where it needs to be and taking care of some of these businesses that are not operating in correct zoning. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Al. Does anybody have a question for Al? Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to this issue? Counsel, anybody have any questions?
Just up to this point, this has been operated as a non-conforming use in a grandfather situation?
This area, the zoning line actually splits his lot. So half of it is conforming as a motel hotel. The north part that burnt, the two-story, is non-conforming. It's in residential, R1. And if they come in for a building permit, I can't issue a building permit because can't build a motel in R1. So they asked for a rezone to a C3. This is a C3 area along Norfolk Avenue, that whole area, there is C3 along that area. If we get into, you know, as Al was saying, if we have issues there on long-term stay, which has there been, there probably has been, people that stayed there for a while. But regardless, it's zoned R1 where they want to rebuild, and I cannot issue a building permit without it being zoned properly.
I guess where I was heading with this is this part of that area that was blanket-zoned back in the eighties, and the zoning at that time, it was zoned improperly?
It would be my guess that back then it was zoned improperly. It didn't follow a lot line or it followed the LA line across there. That'd be my guess.
Okay, thank you. Al, I have a question. Is your lot zoned the same way? Do you have a line going through your lot?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So just to clarify, then, your lot is R3 also, or R1 also?
Correct. You have a little piece that's R1.
I have a little piece of that that is zoned R1.
And it doesn't follow his line either, so...
So it's kind of split in your lot also, so this may benefit you somewhat?
Well, as far as changing it to a C3, I don't believe so. I think the way the business is laid out right now, it's actually more likely to that neighborhood. You know, Chief Meisner's here, and I don't want to bring up...
Al, I'm sorry, could you come up?
And Chief Meisner could more share with you, but we have on a consistent basis, we have police out there, I would say, two or three times a week, if not more. And like I said, they are not, the business isn't being operated the way it's supposed to be operated. It's not being operated. There are kids that were born there that are three or four years old, and these kids are running in the, between our cars and the gas station area. It is not a safe environment for, I mean, somebody needs to pay attention to this. This is more of a liability issue on everybody's part than, you know, a week, two weeks ago, we had kids sitting in the hotel from the windows, shooting BBs at the cars that were parked on the lot because we were moving snow. So there are families that are living in there that have had their kids live there, born there. So I, you know, if they're gonna, if you're gonna operate it or zone it as a C3 and operate it as a hotel, like a short-term stay, that would be proper, but it's not being operated that way. I'm just saying this is an opportunity for the city to come in and say enough is enough. You know, they can run that strip that they have that is zoned as a hotel, but let's not extend to them what you have extended to them all these years.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you.
Just going from memory, that's not the first fire we've had there.
I don't know.
We've had several there over the years, probably three, I guess, and two or four.
When they, when their furniture becomes, you know, they have bedding and stuff like that in the hotel rooms, when they become to the point where they need to get rid of them, they dump them behind our buildings. And we haul, we haul, you can, I mean, it's not, Speedway that's next to them, they have a tall fence, they throw the stuff over the fence, and they have to haul it out. I mean, it's a disaster out there. So to your, you know, to answer your question, yeah, is it a benefit to change that to C3 in a short-term deal? I would say, as a property owner, I would say yes, but this is a way for you guys to stand and stop this.
Thank you, Al.
I guess I'm aging myself a little bit, but that motel used to be my customer on my paper route. And just, I guess, just to be polite, it's evolved quite a bit since when I was riding my bike past there, so...
I already tore one down that was under paper route, too.
Does anybody else have any comments?
So Trent, I guess the question before us is whether we're changing this to changing the zoning or whether we're maintaining the zoning as is, but if we maintain the zoning as is, it still keeps a portion in there that's C3 and a portion then that's R1. It just gives you a little bit more of an enforcement tool that way or not, or it doesn't allow, right now, the R1 zoning will not allow the reconstruction of the commercial use there.
That's correct. That, C3 has to be, can only be a motel or a hotel, it cannot be an apartment. So we would have to go to R3 if we're gonna do something like that. And it would, it has to be for transitional use. And it appears to me that maybe, that's maybe gone a little bit more non-transitional, more apartment style. And C3 does not allow that type of activity for non-transitional.
So Trent... Oh, I'm sorry, Jim.
I guess what I'm struggling with here, or what I'm seeing here, is that they're requesting C3, we're saying, no, we're not gonna give you C3 because you're doing things that aren't supposed to be happening in C3 anyway there, correct?
Well, they have, part of their building that's being operated yet is C3. And for them to rebuild on the other half of their lot, that needs to be C3, too, if they're gonna come in and ask for a building permit. And I believe that request is probably maybe gonna be asked, or, and the amount of damage there is pretty severe. It's in the mechanical area, so there's a lot of code issues there with that.
Okay. Again, what I was trying to get at is that, from what you're saying, they're performing a non-approved operation for C3 because it's long-term, it's apartment development, you know, commercial development. So I understand what we're doing, what we're doing or not doing here. My question is, how come aren't we, in essence, enforcing our zoning regulations or our codes in there?
This has become more aware to me within the last, obviously, I've been doing this a long time, but in the last three months, I did some interviews with some of the people, pretty substantial interviews with the people that got displaced there. So within doing those interviews, I found out everywhere from, that's become their permanent address for multiple years, as we had heard already. We've also, Department of Labor, they've had all their billing, taxes, everything goes there. A lot of them people have their address, their permanent address, as being there by doing these interviews. So to me, is that non-transitional? In my eyes, I look at it as non-transitional.
That's where I was kind of going with my question about previous fires. In the past, the damage hasn't been enough to necessitate the zoning change. We've let them rebuild?
I don't know. I've never honestly looked at the zoning there off the other fires. We've had a, there was a bedroom fire, I think there might have been some furniture stuff, and it wasn't anything that necessitated looking into the zoning. At least, I never looked at it in my time.
So this is more of a condemnation-type situation, or...
A letter was wrote to the owner condemning the property because I could not issue a building permit. So a letter has been wrote, and it has been tagged as condemned because of the zoning.
So maybe just to go where Jim kind of started to go, this isn't really a zoning issue to address Al's concerns, maybe not so much a zoning issue as a non-conforming issue of the zoning that's existing.
The only thing is it splits that lot, and doesn't follow lot lines, which typically we like for those things to follow lot lines. I guess in the past, we normally, I don't know how many, Clint, do you happen to know how many we got in the city that don't follow lot lines? There isn't a whole lot, I don't believe.
I don't think there's a whole lot, and one of the things in regard to this, as it relates to that property along East Norfolk Avenue, whether it's this property that's before you for the zoning change, if it's Al's property next door, which incidentally, the zoning change here doesn't help Al's property because there is no request before the council to change his property, but it's, his property is similarly situated, if, I understood what he's saying. But it's almost as though somewhere back in time, the decision was made on a map or whatever to take the major street, East Norfolk Avenue, and say, we're gonna provide for commercial zoning right next to the street, a depth of, how deep is it, Trent, you know?
It's not terrible deep, I'll look here.
You know, whatever it is, 60, 80 feet, or 100, or whatever, that deep, we're gonna provide for the, for the, for the commercial zoning, and the rest of it stays residential like it was. And we really don't know how that property came to be built. It probably wasn't the responsibility of the paper carrier to get that right back in the day. But I think that when you talk about the concerns that Al's articulated about the use of the property, it's equally, the use of the property that Al talked about, the use of the property that Trent was talking about, that property as a long-term, non-transitional, or non, what's the word, Trent?
I don't know.
Not, you know, where they stay for a long period of time, okay? Where they're staying for extended period of time, it's just as illegal in the R1 under the zoning code as it is in the C3. If it's being used as apartments or whatever, then it needs to be an R3, which it isn't. Now, I think, Trent, you were on the phone when we talked with the attorney for the folks, for the applicant that appeared with them at the, at the Planning Commission. When Trent began to look into that, and we went out and talked to these folks that had been longtime residents, talked about the addresses, that how long people had lived there, and so on and so forth, it has been communicated to the property owner that they can't rebuild the property like that which was damaged by the fire and operated in the same way. Now, if this zoning change was made, they could, whoever owned it, could build a hotel there that was really used as a hotel. And so that enforcement issue going forward has already been addressed, and I think that's, I know from the information that we've talked about, and not only has Trent done that, we've had some information from police reports that we've read, and some other things in regard to that, that the enforcement issues that Al had talked about are certainly on the radar screen going forward as, without regard to what happens with the zoning change here.
I have a question for Trent. In your opinion, would you say this has been, Trent, non, or long-term housing, pretty much 100 percent, or are you thinking that they're are trying to use it as a hotel? Or is it just long-term housing?
I don't know. I would have to ask the owner that or write him a letter.
I mean, as you've done your interviews, your assumption is more long-term housing.
You know, a lot of the people that got displaced were there long-term.
So my question is, if they're not compliant with C3 now, or R1, why are we even looking at this tonight? Because if they're not compliant, you should be, you know, you should have some sort of, if I was coming in here and I was asked for C3, I'd be operating a hotel, not a long-term housing. So I guess I'm confused as to why we're even talking about this.
In my opinion, that's a good question, and I think everybody's questions are right on the money, and Al's questions are right on the money. When it comes to code enforcement, law enforcement, in this particular situation, it seems like the staff has been trying to build the critical mass or the case evidence to support the decisions they're making, which you have to, in my opinion, which you have to look at, your honor and counsel, is the long-term greater use of this piece of property, and how R1 or C3 would fit into that long-term use, when you look at the use from the big picture that's privy to the mayor and council. I can assure you, as Clint described, it is on the radar screen for code enforcement to understand and appreciate how that, how that property's being used. It's a little hard for us to determine because it's kind of a moving target. Some folks, it would be there long-term, some folks are using it as a hotel, and the owner is describing that use as a hotel. So we're still in the process of building that evidence to enforce the C3 or the R1 prohibitions as they are currently written. So it's kind of how would you see the property being long-term, and that's what the property owner wants to do. He wants to rezone it to C3 so he can either, one, I would assume, either, one, rebuild and use it properly as a hotel, or, two, market the property as C3 and a commercial property, which may be in his vision or in the community's best interest.
I think part of the problem is here, we don't have anybody from this group, the owner, to respond to some of these concerns. And I feel I'm a little hesitant on taking any action on this without them addressing some of the concerns that have been brought up by neighboring property owners. And there was concern mentioned about public safety and police, regular police involvement in the area. So it's, I guess, just for the record, it's my concern that there's not a representative of Mr. Ambaji's here, if that's right. No one's here to address the concerns that we're talking about right now.
That's kind of, you know, in my mind, I agree with what Josh is saying, a conforming and a good-standing, conforming use here, it's just housekeeping issue that we're straightening out this zoning that's not right. But with the concerns that are out there that I think are legitimate concerns, maybe we should look at either tabling or voting against until we see somebody here that can answer our questions.
Well, I guess, you know, part of that comes into the play that happens, when you look at zoning issues and when you look at how people operate properties. And, you know, again, if you look also at the Planning Commission's report on this and their stance, I mean, too often, whether it's good, bad, or indifferent, we take personalities into play when we're looking at zoning issues and history things. And if you go back to planning and what you have there is that those things aren't really supposed to come into play that much on it because a zoning could circumvent, you know, a person owning the property, if they sold it as soon as the zoning was changed, as was suggested, then maybe they're trying to get this into a sellable situation where it becomes C3 and they can sell it. Whether that's accurate or inaccurate remains to be seen. But, you know, we're taking personalities and what's happening into consideration here, and whether that's correct zoning or ways to look at zoning is a big question in my mind here. I don't believe that, you know, the amount that we historically have always placed on, well, you know, what are they gonna put there? You know, if I bring a parcel that I'm looking at maybe developing, and I have no idea what I'm gonna develop, I can't tell you what's going to be there. So is that a strike against me, then, because I can't tell you that all I want to do is change it to commercial? So...
If going forward with the ordinance means that the current owners would have to be in compliance with the zoning, with the C3 zoning, and if that were to happen, as Jim said, we don't know what's going to be built there, all we know is whatever is built there would have to comply with the zoning. And I think going forward, the compliance with the zoning is the important issue here, and that's what needs to happen. That would, in my mind, be the first step to solving some of the issues that are there anyway, so...
Yeah, Rob, you guys are all right. We have a couple options. We can kill it, but then they can't apply for anything for six months, or we can pass it on first reading and direct staff to have them here next meeting so we can direct these questions to it. Then we can decide what to do. We could kill it or get some questions answered. So if we kill it tonight, it's done, and they've got six months. If we go on first reading and pass it, stop there, then we'll direct staff to have them here next meeting. We can get these questions answered and then still stop it or go. So that's a possibility. Good point.
I understand the concerns on both sides, but if we have a non-conforming use of half of this facility, I see that as a lot better than non-conforming use of the whole...
of this facility, I see that as a lot better than ha- non-conforming use of the whole facility.
I tend to, I see, I, I agree with what you're saying, Dale. I mean, if you were a non, you're, you're, you're non-conforming right now, and you're, and then you make a request to become, to change some, all of it to C3 from what, and you have a portion of C3, and you're non-conforming now, I don't see how, I think you have to ill, or demonstrate some sort of form of compliance to, you know, before we make them, before I would even suggest moving forward with it.
Well, the first reading suggestion would give you that second bite at the apple, at least in, in my mind. They'd be able to get, you'd get some of those questions answered, potentially, from the, the owner themselves. So you need to be able to set the stage that if you did approve the zoning on second and third readings for C3, that the intention of this community, from the mayor and council's standpoint, would be that that'd be utilized in a conforming manner, which would be a hotel or a motel, and not an apartment. So you'd be able to set that stage, and be able to, to gain that understanding with the, with the owner if that was, were to come to pass.
One of the, one of the things, as, as I've talked with Trent, and we've talked about, uh, the information that's been developed, that's, may, may tend to support some of the assertions that Al has made. We've had the discussions with the representatives of the owner about what is it you really want to do with the property. My understanding, and Trent, you may have some, some newer, or more, more recent information with that, my understanding is that, is that they're still dealing with the insurance company as a result of, of that loss. And I, uh, when we asked the question of staff, uh, that was basically what we were told, was that, uh, they were dealing with the insurance company, and there had been no decision about what exactly they wanted to do there. And, uh, what, uh, happened with the insurance company may have some impact on what direction they end up wanting to go with that. But that's the most recent discussion that I was aware of, uh, in regard to that. Trent, I don't know if you've got anything more different than that, but that was, that was the discussion that, that we had as, as staff with them, as, as this thing developed and came forward.
Any other discussion? We have the planning commission report.
Uh, I'll add one more thing, is another option, a ta- tabling consideration of this for the time being, um, I mean, you said killing it at this point puts it, uh, it takes another six months. If we simply tabled this for further consideration, um, for a first reading vote at a future coun- council meetings, is that an option?
That is.
But one thing we do have, at the second reading, we do have the option to have open discussion. Still, we'd be in the same, it would just be moving it forward.
Meaning the second meeting will be just like the first, you'd still have the same options in front of you.
Right. I just think, given Shane's point, that a vote on whatever stage could potentially be read as an, uh, a commendation of, um, this request, without fully knowing their intentions here, because there's nobody here to, uh, address the concerns, um, I, I have some reservations with that.
And we can, we can look at that after we close the public hearing and introduce the ordinance. All right, any, any other discussion? Al? Yep?
Uh, you know, lis- listening to everything you guys are talking about, I believe, and you guys look at Norfolk, and we always talk about making Norfolk better, making the town better, this is an opportunity for us, for Norfolk, for you guys, to speak right now, and say enough is enough. These guys have had the C3 operation. They are not operating the C3 operation the way it's supposed to be. I can tell you, you guys saying you don't know how long these people are staying there, I can tell you, there is not very, maybe one room there that is not being used as a long-term, uh, stay. And that's on the C3 side of it. So they are not operating properly, they're not, I, this is an opportunity for the city right now to say enough is enough. We gotta, we gotta move forward, we gotta make, make some changes. And this is the opportunity for us to make some changes. Make some changes that will affect the, the city of Norfolk.
Thank you, Al. And, and I, and I do want to reiterate, this body is aware of what you're talking about, and we do, and we've done it in the past, want Norfolk to grow and to prosper, and we are aware of some of these, we just need to maybe fine-tune the way that we're going to work. So, uh, we'll have to see how this goes, but the vote tonight may just be a, a way to get to the next step, but we are aware of that, and I do appreciate it. Any other discussion? Beth will give the planning commission report.
The planning commission held a public hearing on February 20th, 2013, at the request of Mada Ambaji, Inc., from C, for zoning change from C3 local business to R1 single-family, and R1 single-family to C3 service commercial, at 721 East Norfolk. The business on this property operates as a motel. There was a fire on the portion of the property, and it was determined that in order to rebuild, the zone change process would have to be followed. A portion of the property is currently zoned C3, so this brings the entire parcel into the same zoning district. The Norfolk Planning Commission recommends approval of the zone change on a seven to zero vote.
All right, at this time, I would like to close the public hearing, and I would like to have consideration of approval of ordinance 5245, approving the zone district change at the request of Mada Ambaji Incorporated, from C3 and R1 to C3.
Your Honor, I'd offer ordinance number 5245 for consideration.
Okay. Do you have any discussion on this, then?
I still am having a hard time with this, because we know they're not in compliant with their C3 zoning right now, and I feel by passing this on the first reading, we're somehow rewarding people in to break our codes. I mean, I, I totally understand what you're saying, Jim, you know, and I, I make a, I would make a move that we, uh, table, the motion that we table this.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to table, ordinance 5245.
Motion and a second to consider the...
Yeah, motion and a second from Josh to table it.
Subsequent to the motion and a second to consider the vote on the table. The, the motion would...
The motion to table takes precedence. The motion to table with a second is not debatable, so I think you have a second. So the appropriate thing to do is to vote on the motion to table, and then if that doesn't prevail, then you go back to the other motion and vote on this.
Please vote. To ta- this is to table or not to table?
Okay. Voting in favor, the motion to table, council persons, Faust, Coy, Lengy, Clausen, Muirin, Mauning, file. Voting against the motion, Councilman Merrill, motion to table carries.
All right, now I'd like to open the public hearing of Don Pfizer, Orange Development, Incorporated, for a zoning change from C1, R1, R3, and C3 to C3 in the southwest corner of 13th and Norfolk Avenue. Can I have, uh, opening of this hearing, and do we have any discussion? Hi.
Hi. I'm Tracy Bitner.
Yep, and state your name and address.
I'm Tracy Bitner. I live at 200 Bridge Road.
Okay.
Here in Norfolk. I am actually representing Orange Development, um, the applicant for the zone change. The application for the zone change is for the southwest corner of 13th and Norfolk Avenue. It's currently C1, R3, and R1. We want to change it to C3, a portion of it R1, stay on R1. And I have visuals for you.
Thank you.
So, um, Orange Development, and you'll see, is planning to put CVS Pharmacy right on the corner of 13th and Norfolk Avenue. Uh, the pharmacy will employ about 20 to 30 people. We've had, um, purchase agreements signed, ready to go for 11 properties there. The closing date is April 15th. And hopefully, the pharmacy would be, um, coming in October. So I'm presenting this to you without, um, with issues, there are issues involved. And you'll see, um, from the layout here of that corner, that we've had some 14th Street access over here. This north access, um, is, is our issue with the Department of Roads right now. Um, at the planning commission meeting, it was passed, um, upon condition of the Department of Roads offering their position. We have, we didn't get the position until Friday. Um, it's not, uh, the developer did not like the position of the Department of Roads, and so would need, need some time to, um, respond to that. Really what's happening is that he has to go back to CVS and ask if they still really want it here. So we're at a critical point right now, uh, and I just wanted to present this and update you on what is going on, and get it out there. You'll see from the second sheet, our preliminary plat for the subdivision. There's four lots right now, um, and you'll see, and it's hard to see on this, and I should have highlighted, but Lot 4 is down on the cul-de-sac, uh, right here, uh, hoping to keep that R1. Uh, we just needed the backyard of that house, so we've made it more rectangle there. Um, the rest, we're hoping to be, oh, sure, sure. Go take a look on that, too. Um, the, and then the third sheet is how it's zoned right now. So you'll see all the corners are, of that intersection are commercial right now, and, um, so what I guess I would propose at this point in time is that, um, we, uh, would like to continue this public hearing and keep it open until the next city council date, so, uh, we have a chance to respond to the Department of Roads issue appropriately.
And then, could probably table the ordinance tonight, so that we don't vote on anything since we're leaving it open?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Quinn?
Just a couple of questions, if, if I might. One is, Tracy, you mentioned the change, and, and I think from the way that this was originally drawn up, and the original application, uh, that house that you talked about, that you talked about remaining R1, that, that was slated to go to.
Correct.
Okay, so, but because of the way those slanted lots are on the cul-de-sac, you basically clipped off the corner that, that was needed on the northern edge, or the, the north, northeast edge, for the actual, uh, uh, commercial establishment, and that allowed you to, to change the configuration of the lot, and then leave that house in place. Is that correct?
Exactly, and, um, the intent is to not rezone more than we have to.
And so what we've seen happening here, just so the council's aware of this, and I'm going to ask Trent for some help here, but there's been some, uh, changes made in that legal description then. So basically what happened was when the application came to the planning commission, when the hearing was, was advertised, both at the planning commission and here, we had this big description, okay? As the project has gone forward, and it's been refined, it's been drawn in a little bit, tightened up a little bit, so, um, the actual ordinance that's before you has, that is in the agenda, has had the legal change to reflect that, that house that you're talking about down there in the southeast corner is not having the zoning changed. And that, everything's appropriate, because it was in effect overnoticed before, and that's been drawn back in.
Correct.
So that's the one thing. The second thing, just as a, as, as my understanding, because I'm not, is, is the council fully aware of what the, the Department of Roads position has been? What, what has happened? Do you want, do you want to go ahead and do that?
I'll explain it.
Because I, so that, so that that's out there, what's, what's going on there?
Right, you'll see on the, on the layout right now, that they have the north access on Norfolk Avenue, right in the median break, and Walgreens is right north of this. Um, the Department of Roads is worried about left-hand turns coming into the parking lot, backing up traffic into the intersection. That's why, uh, we've got the access over on 14th Street. But CVS would like a straight shot into their, uh, drive-thru, and to not have people having to make several turns. The Department of Roads' position right now is to move that north access over to the west, so it's not in line with the median break.
And, and leaving it as a right-in, right-out?
Right-in, right-out.
Farther west than the way it's drawn on the front.
Exactly. Yeah, this was the first, uh, layout here. And, and, and that's why, uh, you know, CVS needs to approve, prove it, and decide that they really want it here, if that's going to be the access.
And then, for the council's knowledge, that would make the traffic go down to 14th Street, come in the west side, so they wouldn't be bottling up in, in, in the middle of that block, so that's what they're talking about. We can leave this open, and they'll have an answer by, in two weeks, I would think.
Yeah, yes. Time is of the essence here. We are in a time crunch to even make this work, so...
Okay, we're, we're willing to do that, I think.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak on this? We are going to leave this hearing open, so if you don't speak tonight, you will be able to speak the next time we have a council meeting and have this on there, so... All right, I would like to have a motion to continue this public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue the public hearing. Keep it open till we have our next meeting. Everyone, roll call.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
I'd like to get the ordinance now introduced, um, and then we can talk about whether we want to table that, since we need more public hearing.
I'll introduce ordinance number 5246.
Second.
Now I, now we can have a motion to table.
I'd make the motion to table. Ordinance 5246.
Second.
Okay, now I have a motion to table, ordinance 5246. The ordinance is a request from Don Pfizer, Orange Development, Incorporated, for zoning change from C1, R3, R1, C3, to C3 in the southwest corner of 13th and Norfolk Avenue. We have an ordinance in front of you to table this until we can work on the public hearing next time. Let's have roll call.
All council members voting in the affirmative, motion to table carries.
So we'll continue this. Thank you. Uh, now I'd like consideration of Resolution 2013-6, approving the final plot and subdivision agreement for the Richard E. Miller subdivision, a two-lot subdivision located a half-mile south of Woodland Park on Eastwood Avenue. Can I have a motion, please?
I'd, uh, offer Resolution 2013-6.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? If not, roll call.
All council members voting in the affirmative, Resolution 2013-6 is adopted.
I would now like a consideration of Resolution 2013-7, approving a sidewalk waiver for the Richard E. Miller subdivision, a two-lot subdivision located a half-mile south of Woodland Park on Eastwood Avenue.
Your Honor, I'd offer Resolution number 2013-7 for consideration.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Roll call, please.
All council members voting in the affirmative, Resolution 2013-7 is adopted.
I would now like consideration of Resolution 2013-8, approving the final plot... I would now like consideration of Resolution 2013-8 approving the final plot and subdivision agreement of Dollar General located at the intersection of First and Norfolk Avenue.
I'd move consideration of Resolution 2013-8.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Could we have some discussion?
Yeah, I do have a question on this, or two. I, so everybody knows, this is the subdivision agreement of the building of a new Dollar General store in what's commonly referred to as the Alco parking lot area, First and Norfolk Avenue. I first would ask, is there anyone here representing Dollar General? Okay. I wonder if you'd entertain some questions?
Could you state your name and address, please?
My name is Fred Franklin. I'm with Alpha Land Surveying. I'm representing the owner, which is BSB Incorporated LLC. And they're the owners of the proposed lots 1 and 2. Lot 3, as proposed, is actually owned by the City of Norfolk, which was a lot boundary change that you guys did back in December, and we just decided to clean it up and give it a lot number as part of this subdivision.
Thanks for being here. I appreciate that. I understand you've had potentially some conversations about the facade of the store, the aesthetics of the, of the building you're proposing to put there. And I raised this, this area, the old mill area, its historic importance to the community, and I know that there's been studies done within the community to potentially develop that area, and that it's an important area as far as serving as a gateway, entryway to downtown Norfolk. The intent of the developers, I'll get to the point. I, I think there's some concern that the building erected there not be a welcome to Norfolk, that's a potentially, you know, a basic tin shed type, style building, and that there be a willingness, at least to work with the community, to talk about potential to improve, to have a nice-looking, attractive space for retail development there, yours and potentially others in the future by you. So, if you, I'd welcome any comments you might have on that, or any knowledge of conversations that you've had.
Well, I can certainly relay that concern to the Dollar General people that are thinking, thinking about buying this lot. We need to make sure we understand that they don't own Lot 1, and the developer of the subdivision is not going to be any own, have any ownership with Dollar General. He would like to try to sell Lot 1 off of what he currently has. And so, therefore, I think that when, I mean, if the subdivision were to get approved tonight, then subsequent building layout and proposed, what Dollar General would like to do with Lot 1 is going to be coming before you again. And at that point, I really wouldn't even be involved in that, in that part of it. But I can definitely let them know your concerns, and in that way, they understand that those are some questions that are going to be coming up as they move forward with the possibility of buying Lot 1 and trying to get something situated there.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Trent, have, in your, in your talks, have you had any talk with them on this?
Your Honor and counsel, I have, actually, and we did receive in a set of building plans for the Dollar General. I did review them just tonight, and the building is being upgraded compared to maybe what they would build elsewhere. On the front, I just did a quick review. On the front would be a 10-foot stone or brick, a larger center block type of brick, and then would be ephesus above that, which is basically the stucco or the, it's an insulation system that goes on the outside. And then on the sides, on the east and the west side, they're also showing a, about a four-foot, 40-inch to four-foot stone with ephesus above that all the way back. On the north end, they are, it's just tin. So, they are not extending that stone or the ephesus around on the north end.
And Trent, does this come back in front of us, or do you just give a building permit?
They will, I think they're going to be looking for a building permit soon, so if, soon as we get our pre-plan done on, or not a pre-plan, our review done on that, everybody goes through it and then sees any corrections or changes and gets that passed on, then the building permit would be issued.
So, we may not see it, but I, I think Trent has asked them already and give, like he's going to give them word that we'd like to see a nice building there, so.
Yeah, and I'm encouraged to hear that, Trent, and I would emphasize, again, if you would, that there is a constituency here that would like to have those concerns be heard about aesthetics, given the historic nature of that location and the potential for future development, retail and otherwise there.
Dollar General's said they would, and they've actually, they had no doubts in their mind that we wanted something better than maybe what they'd put somewhere else. Because by code, we really don't have anything that would make them, make it, you know, golden, so. And we each probably have different ideas on what we would all like, but they are going above and beyond, so.
Thank you, Trent. Thank you, sir. Any other discussion?
I guess, again, that this takes us back to where I was earlier, and I am on many of these, especially on this being a lot switch and that. If this same owner, be it, BSB, came in, had nobody in mind whatsoever, other than that they wanted to make the land more marketable and decided that they wanted to look at this as a lot, you know, as, as two different lots there, we need to look at it as that, as saying, okay, is this right or is this wrong? In my mind, it is correct. Now, the BSB people have talked to me, and this has been a long-going thing, because I actually heard about it back in early part of January that way. And the statement was made to me that, hey, even if Dollar General decides not to buy it, decides not to option on it, we still would like to see the lot split there because it makes it more marketable. And so, regardless, I really appreciate that Dollar General's saying, hey, they want to do something a little more upscale and do something nicer there. That's, to me, that plays very little, if anything, as to how this is, you know, if we decide to or not to do the lot split on it. It needs to be based on, you know, just pure facts of whether this is right or wrong for that area. In my mind, it makes it more marketable, it makes it so that it will move forward. So, I understand the, the concerns for, for aesthetic focus and that, in that, in that area, but again, that, that shouldn't come into play as to whether this is right or wrong for it being a lot split or not.
Thank you, Jim.
And unfortunately, this is the only venue we have to show our constituents that we hear them. And I think the vote will go as it should, but I think that we have to show our constituents that we are letting their voice be heard. So, the discussion's been good, and I, I agree with what you're saying, Jim, but I think it's still good to have that discussion. So many of these things that come before us, we vote and they go through, and it's as if we had no discussion, when we've already visited some of this stuff in subcommittees and, and other avenues. I just think it's important to let the people know that we're doing their will, so.
And I appreciate that, Jim, and I think there's probably more appropriate venues in which to have this discussion, but as Dale said, Norfolk currently doesn't have those venues. There's, there's not an overlay district there. There's no covenant. So, this was the chance to express those concerns publicly.
Thanks, Josh. Any other discussion?
Just have one question for Clint. Just footage things that are in here, they'll get corrected before they?
Yes.
Finalize that way, and you know which item I'm talking about.
Yeah. We'll fix the, we'll fix the error, fix the title.
Okay.
Could we have roll call then? Abstaining?
No, abstain, not voting.
So, you're going to declare abstaining?
You would like to abstain, Josh?
Yes.
Voting in favor of the motion to approve Resolution 2013-8, council members Faust, Coy, Langy, Merrill, Clausen, Muirin file abstaining from voting, Councilman Mourning. Resolution 2013-8 is adopted.
Now, could I have consideration of approval of a sub-recipient agreement with Sid Sedbeck related to a city-owned lot, which is being placed into a community revitalization grant program and deed in said lot located at 810 South 8th Street to Sid Sedbeck?
I'll make the motion, second that.
Thank you. Now we have discussion?
I just wanted to get you up to speed on the CR grants that we've been working with in the city. This will be the sixth of seven lots that we have assumed ownership and sold to a developer for low-to-moderity income owners. We can help provide down payment assistance. As I said, this is the sixth lot. It's also involved some lots where there's been demolition with permits and codes department. So, we feel really good that we're able to put in a new home for people who are needy and worthy of buying a home in our community, so just wanted you to know.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Could I have a roll call, please?
All council members voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
All right, now I'd like to have consideration of ordinance number 5247 authorizing the sale of city-owned property at 810 South 8th Street to Sid Sedbeck. Any discussion, or could I have a motion first?
Offer ordinance number 5247.
On first reading?
On first reading, yes, sir.
Second that.
Thank you. Now, could I have discussion? Could I have a short title if we have no discussion?
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska to authorize the sale of city property to provide the terms of sale and authorize the mayor to execute and deliver a quitclaim deed to the property, to provide for remonstrance to said sale as provided by law, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Could we have a roll call?
All council members voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5247 carries on first reading.
Could I have a motion to suspend the rules?
Suspend the sale of property? We could do that. It's annexation that you can.
Okay.
Annexation has to be on, on three separate ones, the sale of this. And, and just the, the other thing with this is that the, the property then, well, actually not because of the remonstrance on our public, it's about 60 days before the property will actually be transferred. And then, the, the combination of the, of the sub-recipient agreement, that's got all the stuff in there, that he's got to build the house under the, under the criteria of the grant and sell it to somebody that meets the income requirements in order to, to fulfill all the obligations for the, for the money that came to the city and get the new house put in place, and away we go, so. Kind of a big process, but.
With that being said, then, Your Honor, I would move that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5247 on second and third.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call?
All council members voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5247 carries on second and third.
I'd now like to have consideration of ordinance number 5248, amending the section 18-12 of the city code to make all provisions previously applicable to the Elkhorn Cabin applicable to the Elkhorn Lodge.
I'd move consideration of ordinance 5248.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we have some discussion? We talked about this last meeting where we're basically moving the cabin out to our new land there and, and making the same rules apply.
If I may, Mr. President, what we're doing here is basically changing that, we're using the opportunity. One of the things that's kind of nice about the location of the lodge is that it, it has the, it has the, a street address, which is going to make it nicer to, nicer to find. And we've addressed as, in a manner that's appropriate, I think, the, the issues just related to the alcohol and where the alcohol's able to be had relative to the, the new Elkhorn Lodge property and to the, as it relates to the parking general. So, we can answer any questions you might have.
Do we have any questions?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment. I stopped out there last week just to kind of walk through, and it's tremendous facility. The staff have done a great job with the work that they have done. It's just going to be quite an upgrade for the citizens, I think.
It's, it is, Dale's very nice, and I'm really happy that Pat did that, and I'm sure he's going to throw a party for us for having that facility out there, but we'll see.
It also provides a new shop for the, for the folks out there.
Yeah, it's helped a lot out there.
They actually have a modern bathroom now that they can use. They don't have to go outside to use the outside bathroom. It's quite a step up. They even have electricity and running water, so.
Any other comments? We'll have a short title.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska to amend section 18-12 of the official city code to change a reference to and description of the Elkhorn Cabin to the Elkhorn Lodge to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please have a roll call.
All council members voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5248 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I would move we suspend the rules and pass 5248 on second and third.
Second that, Your Honor.
Any discussion? We have a motion for second and the third? Please have a roll call.
All council members voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5248 carries on second and third.
Does anybody have any further discussion? I want to appreciate everybody coming out tonight for, for my first meeting that I got to run. I appreciate all you guys and your patience, so thank you. And I haven't got to say this for quite a while, but we are adjourned.
Doesn't look like Barack. He called me Mr. President. He didn't look like Barack. I'm giving him a second look that way. Oh, gavel culture, Mr. President. Did you see these guys? I was, I mean, I think, I was, I thought maybe you'd gabble about the lack of decorum and respect.
I know, I was gonna.
Oh, so you're going out to Texas now? Yeah. I was really disappointed in this whole left side.
I know, I know. My right side looking and giggling at you.